Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore is absent. We are now on to an invocation by Reverend David J. Parry Jr.
Let us stand, please. And let us pray. Dear wise and loving God, first let us say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for those with the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities, especially in these stressing extraordinary and political itineraries and happenings, both past and coming in in 2024 and beyond. In the scriptures, it is said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities. You have established those authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, we pray for our mayor, our deputy mayor, and all council members. And we are asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Grant them a keen thirst for impartiality and rightness. Grant them confidence in what is good and timely. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. We pray for the agendas set before them and all of the appointments and resolutions presented here this morning. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Asbury Park. And it is in your most blessed name that we pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
Thank you. May be seated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you to stand back up again. I want her to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The reorganization meeting notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 1, 2024, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, we're on to the nomination of deputy mayor. Would anyone like to make a nomination?
I would.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Before I move forward, are there, would anyone else like to make any nominations?
We're nominating Amy Quinn.
Thank you.
For the record.
Okay. Resolution 2024-2, resolution appointing a deputy mayor, Amy Quinn. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now on to the swearing in of deputy mayor.
Did you break the clock, Lisa?
Go back.
We break the clock for a lot longer now. The right hand?
I, Amy Quinn, do solemnly swear or affirm, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance of the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
City of Asbury Park Deputy Mayor.
City of Asbury Park Deputy Mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'm just going to say one quick thing, Fred. I think this is the first time that John Moore hasn't been here, and he and I have been together 11 years now. So I am missing him today, but most importantly, I want to thank this council. I am lucky to serve with so many women that are supportive, even when we disagree. I'm lucky to live in a city that 20 some years ago, when I came here, felt like home and for a family that is always my biggest cheerleaders and that occasionally get told off because of policies that I pass and are still my biggest cheerleaders. So, thank you, everybody. And for the, thank you.
Okay, we're now on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of the December 20th meeting and the emergency meeting minutes of January 9, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda. All matters listed on consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda, we have Resolutions 2024-3 through 2023-24. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore. I'm sorry.
Yes. I think this is the first one he's ever missed, right?
We're now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2024-26, Resolution authorizing emergency roof repairs needed at City Hall.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-28, resolution appointing Frederick C. Raffredo Esquire of the Firm of Hill Wallach LLP to serve as municipal attorney for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-29, resolution appointing PFK O'Connor-Dadez LLP to serve as auditor for the city and authorizing the execution of agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-30, resolution appointing T&amp;M Associates to serve as municipal engineer for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional engineering services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-31, resolution pursuant to NJSA 40:48-1, authorizing the city engineer to perform services as designee to the city manager for review of development permits in any area of special flood hazard.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-73, resolution appointing Dilworth Paxton LLP to serve as bond counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-32, resolution appointing Dilworth Paxton LLP to serve as redevelopment council and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-33, resolution appointing Mayor Ziti Falcon LLP to serve as waterfront redevelopment council and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution of the mayor and city council, uh, Resolution 2024-34, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park to enter a professional service agreement with Public Resources Advisory Group for the provision of pilot/rabbed administration.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-35, resolution appointing Acacia Financial Group Inc. to serve as financial advisors for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-36, resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional real estate appraisal services to Pamela J. Brodowski at the Firm of BRB Valuations and Consulting Services LLC.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-37, resolution appointing Ggem Insurance Agency to serve as an insurance brokerage consultant, risk manager, and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-38, resolution appointing Law Offices of Parker McKay to serve as Oprah counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-39, resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the Firm of Kyle McManus Associates LLC to serve as the city's consulting planner for 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-40, resolution appointing Law Offices of Genova Burns LLC to serve as labor counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-41, resolution appointing Community Grants Planning and Housing LLC to serve as affordable housing administrative agent for the city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-42, resolution appointing the Firm of Serenian Edwards &amp; Nolan LLC to serve as affordable housing counsel for the city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-43, resolution appointing city prosecutor James Butler.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-44, resolution appointing alternate city prosecutor James Carton.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-45, resolution appointing city public defender Matthew Sage.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-46, resolution appointing alternate public defender Donald Greer.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-47, resolution appointing Gregory B. Pasquale Esquire to serve as special tax counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-48, resolution appointing the Firm of Jean Anthony Esquire to serve as rent levelling board attorney for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-49, resolution appointing Akari and Ayvino to provide architectural services for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional architectural services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-50, resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the Firm Ingenuity Infrastructure to perform special project engineering services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-51, resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the Firm of Dynamic Traffic LLC to perform special project engineering services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-52, resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the Firm of ARH Associates to perform special project engineering services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-53, resolution authorizing the award of a contract to VCOM LLC to perform telecommunications and 5G engineering services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-54, resolution appointing the Firm of CDM Smith Incorporated to perform special projects engineering services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
You're doing great, Lisa.
Thank you. Okay. Resolution appoint, authorizing appointments to the Asbury Park TV Committee. The appointees are Kathy Kelly, Alyssa DeLeo, Michael Sedano, and Angela Bez Anderson with a term to, with a term to expire January 15, 2027. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
A comment, I just want to acknowledge Ed Salvis, who was one of our first AP TV committee members. He's in the back. He's not, he's left us this year, and we are going to miss him tremendously. But you've been on over 10 years, Ed, right? 11 years. So, thank you for serving on the AP TV committee.
Uh, Resolution 2024-56, resolution authorizing appointments to the Business Advisory Committee. The appointees are Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn, City Manager Lillian Nazaro, Julianne Murray, Jen Hampton, Bianca Frida, Kathy Kelly, Russell Lewis, Reggie Flimlin, Sylvia Sylvia Choffey, Robin Elliott Preston, Chris Siderski, David Lewis, Danny Krop, Jean McNola, and Megan Boyle, with a term to expire January 15, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Can I edit that? So Reggie.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. You read a name that is not on the committee because she sold her business. Okey dokey. Is that okay? Reggie. Yeah, she knows. She knows. And we are sorry to see her go. She had juice space in for years, and it has new owners. So we wish the new owners the best, and hopefully they'll join the committee.
Awesome.
Don't take a new motion over on the list, doesn't it?
On the revised list. May I have a motion?
Second.
And you have a second? Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-57, resolution authorizing appointments to the Community Development Block Rent Committee. The appointees are Mayor John Moore, Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn, Cassandra Dickerson, and Leisha Floyd, with a term to expire January 15, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-58, resolution extending the duration of the CCRB exploratory committee and reappointing its membership. The members are Elaine Rocha, Daniel Harris, Derek Minow Blum, Reverend Jason Jennings, John Kaplow, Paul Weinstein, Diane Shelton, Deputy Police Chief Guy Thompson, Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn, Councilmember Yvonne Clayton, City Manager Lillian Nazaro, and City Attorney Frederick C. Raffredo Esquire, with a term to be extended until June 30, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-59, resolution authorizing appointments to the Deal Lake Commission. The appointees are Jeannie Tore and Josh Starner, with a term to expire January 15, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-60, resolution authorizing appointments to the Environmental Shade Tree Committee. The appointees are Deputy Mayor Quinn and Russell Lewis, with a term to expire January 15, 2029.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-61, resolution authorizing appointments to the Green Team. The appointees are city manager or designee,